Good morning. All right, thank you, thank you. Good morning, and we'll turn it over now to our very capable City Club.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 19th. Please stand by our invocation. Led by Pastor Rainey. Pastor Rainey, are you here? Okay, Pastor Rainey is not on. Mr. President, will you give the invocation?
Yes, ma'am.
And remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Gracious God, again, we come thankful for this day, for thy people, for life, for strength, and for health, as in that you look down upon this council and the decisions that we would make for the benefit of your people. Blessed Ms. Stimson and every person under the sound of my voice, let the work of our minds and thoughts of our minds work toward building a better community with more peace and more harmony. These are the blessings we ask, in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich. Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Again, good morning. In response to national, state, and local guidance, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's supplemental emergency proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall and in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comment to the council by contacting the City Clerk's office at cityclerk@mobil.org. All comments and commentary will be acknowledged and disseminated to council members. As always, the meeting is available through our live stream and through the council's Facebook page. Any persons choosing to speak will have a period of three minutes to make their presentation. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that you have 60 seconds to conclude your presentation. Those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we are appreciative of your continued interest in our municipal government.
Approval of minutes of January 12th.
A move.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Wait till.
We need a motion to adopt the property purchase disclosure for the Brookly property purchase.
So moved. Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? Absent any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Communications from the mayor.
You're on mute, Mr. Mayor. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor. It's your... There we go.
Got it now. Appreciate that. Good to see everybody this morning. Later today, I'll be joining Councilman Richardson as we remember those citizens of our community that have died from COVID-19. We'll be joining other cities across the county and the state in doing this. Want to thank Councilman Richardson for bringing this to our attention, and we certainly issue our condolences to all those families who have lost members and loved ones, you know, to this deadly disease. As we all know, it's still rampaging out there. Thank goodness, there are some vaccines being administered, and hopefully in the coming days and coming weeks and months, that the the increase of vaccines will be somewhat like we saw the increase in testing capacity. Now, last week, we announced our continuing partnership with USA Health. If you recall, that, you know, we worked closely with USA Health in the COVID testing over at the Civic Center, and we are now supporting their efforts to provide vaccines at the Civic Center. This is a drive-through facility. Drive-through vaccinations are given. Later today, we'll be jointly releasing an online registry form for the public, which will be handled, the registration itself will be handled by USA Health. But this will be open to the public. To my knowledge, it's kind of the first time that there's been an online registry so that when you sign up, that you have an appointment to be able to get your vaccination. And what happens when you fill out the registration form, they will categorize you or put you in a queue according to the existing ADPH guidelines so that you actually have an appointment where you don't have to wait and just hope that you make the cutoff. You know, some of the challenges that we have in this process, other than it's new and everybody that's administering vaccines is trying to figure out how to do it more effectively, is that the Pfizer vaccine has to be refrigerated at very, very low temperatures. There is a challenge with having the number, the correct number of personnel to actually deliver the vaccines, but also just the distribution of the vaccines from the federal government to the state government and then to the local communities, you know, is a little bit rough at this point at best, but hopefully it'll get streamlined in the coming weeks. Last, the very end of last week, I had an opportunity to sit down with a couple of members of the Mobile Junior League as well as representative of the Rose Center, a young lady who is actually Miss Mobile Bay, Brianna Viger, journalist Lynn O'Shu, Chief Batiste, and Director Barber. We had an opportunity to listen to some really heartrending stories about under-reported problem in our community, and it has to do with human trafficking. You know, this is a, I mean, it will absolutely break your heart to hear what is going on. Again, I would make the comment that it's under-reported because typically those that have been the victim of human trafficking don't want to come forward. We have agreed as a city and with the public safety officials that we were going to support those that are working on this problem, trying to shine light on it, and hopefully we'll be able to do things that will help prevent human trafficking. But to all those parents who have children ages 10, 12, 14, all the way to college, let me say this, that the social media, in the social media world, our children need to know that when they are speaking with someone that they don't personally have a relationship with, they really may not know who they're talking to. And I hope that there'll be more information forthcoming about that so we can alert everybody to things that they need to be aware of so that we can help curtail this problem. Yesterday was the first day since I've been mayor that I think that I haven't participated in the MLK Day celebrations. You know, Dr. King's impact still touches all of us. When I think about our mission and about Dr. King's mission, I think there's some parallel, but there's a bit parallel in that when we talked about creating One Mobile, you know, that was becoming a safer, more business and family-friendly city. And even when our country today, it seems to be more divided than ever, I think that as Mobeians, we can continue to unite in this shared goal, and we're better off, we all know it, we're all better off working together than working against each other. So for those that celebrated Dr. King's birthday yesterday, hopefully this time next year, we'll be able to join together and do it as has been done in years past. So, at this time, Mr. President, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of Ms. Stimson? Mr. Vice President?
Hey, good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
Listening to you talking about the human trafficking, I have always heard about the big stories like in Atlanta, you know, major airport areas. The issue that we have here in Mobile, is it small or minor? Or is it a growing problem that we are facing here in the Mobile area?
Counsel, the way I would answer that, I think, is what you just said about it's a growing problem. It has existed, but it's like a lot of abuse problems is that sometimes people just do not want to report them. And when they don't report them, or if they're not willing to, or if they do report them, but they're not willing to go to court to try to convict the perpetrators, you know, this problem will continue. So, we have, as a society, we have a lot of work to do to determine how do we slow this down? And it's really through an education process, and I'm going to say that education process needs to be directed first at our young people because I believe they're the most vulnerable to this.
Is the school system is on top of this in a type of way?
I feel like they probably are, but Mr. Thredgill and I not had a conversation at this point in time about what they are doing, and so I look forward to being able to do that between Chief Batiste and Director Barber. I'm sure that's in our future.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions of Ms. Stimson? Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
May I proceed to clerk?
Adoption of the agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. Dave?
Move the adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID-19 items be declared as such.
Second.
Then probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearing. Today is the public hearing to fix the cost of demolition of structures at 908 Fairmont Street, 1312 Charmaine Circle North, and 422 Lincoln Boulevard.
Is there anyone here or anyone connected that would like to offer any commentary during these said public hearings?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, we have Milton Mills.
Mr. Mills, if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Milton Mills. I'm 75 years old. I live at 7441 Carson Road South. The property at 908 Fairmont belongs to me, and I really don't have that kind of money.
Is there anything else that you would like to share, Mr. Mills?
Well, other than that, I've been trying to sell it, and I hadn't had any purchasers. I had a boat in the rear of the house. I was never notified that they was going to go ahead and take that down. I knew that in the future they was going to do it, but I didn't find out they had leveled it until after it was already done.
Yes, sir. Is Mr. Doffenbach available? David, David Doffenbach?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here, David, with Municipal Enforcement.
Yes, sir. Did you hear what a citizen just reported?
That is correct. Mr. Milton Mills is correct that the site was demolished, and part of our policy is to clear the site of all nuisances that are on site. And if there's an inoperable vehicle that fit the definition of a junk boat, that would have been removed as well. As for the costs that are being fixed, those are the direct costs related to the demolition and the removal of all those items on the site, including accessory structures. There was a shed or two that was removed as well. He does have the option to work with our county department, Kathleen Scott, to work out some payment ish, I'm sorry, to set up a payment schedule. But other than that, these are the direct costs of the demolition of the structure and all the accessory structures for the site.
Mr. Williams?
I just, I was just going to add, David, I think there also is, if none of that action is taken, then it will be placed as a lien on the property. Is that correct?
It's my understanding that if the costs are fixed, the accounting department will send out an invoice or a bill, and there's a certain amount of time that the property owner has to pay or make arrangements to do a payment schedule. If that is not completed, then yes, they could actually end up with a lien on the property, and that would be recorded with the Mobile County Probate Court.
Anything further, Mr. Williams?
No, thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mills, do you have access to that number to potentially work out some arrangements as Mr. Doffenbach mentioned?
Yes, ma'am. The lady that is here said she has the number.
That'll be fine. These are the direct costs, and we appreciate you coming down today to to let us know where you stand as it relates to this property.
Thank you. Appreciate you for taking the time to listen to me.
Yes, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as a part of any of the public hearings called by City Club? If not, the public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Mr. President, we have Elizabeth Stevens, David Clark on to address the food truck ordinance.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Stevens, you want to go first?
Well, I just want to thank y'all for considering the concerns of the businesses downtown. They heard that y'all were putting it off and left me to talk to you at this meeting. But anyway, I just want to thank you for the consideration that you've given. I know it's been frustrating, Joel. These are, communication is just difficult these days, and everybody's trying to do the best they can, and so I appreciate the consideration and the fact that you are considering their concerns. And that's all, unless you have some questions for me.
Mr. President?
Mr. Dave?
This would probably be a good place to say that Finance Committee, well, first of all, that the intention is to hold this matter over for a month, and the Finance Committee will meet on February 2nd, Tuesday, February 2nd, immediately following the City Council meeting to take this issue up again. I have sent an email, Ms. Stevens, to the clerk and the assistant clerk asking them to provide all necessary information and links to you and Mr. Clark. And I would hope that, what we will, Ms. Stevens asked what document we would be looking at, and we'd be looking at the document that's currently before us and taking comment with respect to that document. We hope to have some additional information from the administration that will allow us to look at the effect of certain of the proposed setbacks. And I would, we'd look forward to having a discussion and hope that we'll have representatives from both the food truck and the brick and mortar industry at that meeting on February 2nd. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Dave. Any other commentary or questions for Ms. Stevens? We certainly appreciate all that you do, Ms. Stevens, and thank you for offering that commentary. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the City Council. I echo Elizabeth Stevens just to hold this over and have the February 2nd meeting for some continued collaboration and participation, and hopefully, you know, there'll be a sweet spot and a balance struck at that time. But thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. May I proceed to clerk?
Essential COVID-19 items held over. 64036, ordinance to rezone property located at the east terminus of Blue Ridge Boulevard extending to the west terminus of Old Donovan Drive North, the west terminus of Harness Way, the north terminus of Creek Line Drive, and the north terminus of Valleydale Drive from R1, R2, and B1 to R1.
Move to lay over two weeks.
Second.
Probably moved to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
34040, ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code regarding short-term lodging or rental.
Move to hold over until July 6th.
Then probably move to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
07043, ordinance pertaining to animal tethering.
Move to lay over two weeks.
Second.
Then probably move to second, any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
08003, approved purchase order to octane forklifts for electric forklifts. 08004, approved purchase order to train US for four gas electric rooftop HVAC units for Harmon Recreation Center. 09005, allocate monies from the Stormwater Fund to the Osprey Contract and Stormwater Management Activities. 21006 and 007 are authorized in contract to Jay Payne Organization for Lions Park Improvement Phase 1 and for Sam Stotz Park Improvement Phase 2. 23008, acceptees for acquisition of property for McGregor Avenue widening from Dolphin Street to Airport Boulevard.
So moved.
Second.
Then probably move to second, any discussion?
Just want to say thank you to Brad for getting those bid sheets to me.
Absolutely, and we look forward to the facelift that will take place at the park there. There's just a lot of great work going on in Lions Park, we're totally, we will be working on. A total facelift for Lions Park. Look forward to it. Thank you to Brad Christensen and to Ms. Kim Harden and each and every one who has worked to get these items on this agenda. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID-19 items being introduced for the first time. 57001 through 21041.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Dave?
I move for immediate consideration of items 57001, 03027, 03028, 37034, 40035, 40036, 40037, 58038, and 60039. The remainder to hold over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Then probably move to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Mr. President?
Aye?
On discussion.
Oh.
I don't know from, yes, thank you. Mayor Ann?
Sir?
Did you all get the on the straight on?
Yes, sir.
Taboos?
Yes, sir. Resolution 21041.
Thank you.
Okay.
Need to add that to the agenda.
I did, I guess.
I mean, by like a vote or something.
Yeah, but we're not going to get up today. We need to, don't we need to go ahead and vote on taking these items up and then add the other one to the agenda?
We can add, I want to vote on it next week, so in order for us to do that, we need to add this one.
But what's before us right now is to take up these items?
Yes.
Well, we, it was, it's already added. When you adopted the agenda, it was added on here.
Okay.
Okay. I.
Okay. 57001.
Wait, wait, wait. We never voted to take them up, did we?
Oh. Oh, that's right. He was under discussion.
Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
57001, amend Chapter 57, Article 2, Division 2 of the Mobile City Code to add a new section on food trucks.
Move to hold over one month. That would be February 16th. Is that the holiday?
Seventeen, yeah.
Move to hold over till February 17th.
Second.
Probably move to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
03027 and 028 are appointing Mary Kidd, Wayne Gardner, Chris Enzor to the Ad Hoc Short Term National Advisory Committee and appointing Mattie Shepherd to the History Museum of Mobile Board.
A move.
30, no, I was going to take them all.
Okay.
37034, revoke business license held by Christopher Gully doing business at Shotgun Party Hall on Spring Hill Avenue. 400353637 are fixing costs for demolition of structures at 908 Fairmont Street, 1322 Charmaine Circle North, and 422 Lincoln Boulevard. 58038, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat, weed lean group 43. 60039, approve award of special bonus to the Officer of the Month for December 2020. Okay. That's it.
So moved.
Second.
Then probably move to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Call for public hearing. call for public hearing to rezone property located at 107 and 111 North Lafayette Street and 106 Providence Street, north side of Oshil Road, extending to the east side of Providence Street and the west side of North Lafayette Street from B1 and R1 to R1, scheduled February 17th.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move to second, any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Announcement.
Ms. Gregory?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said, thank you.
Gina Gregory?
Just a couple of things. The Ziegler widening project is well underway. A lot is going on out here, and we are doing our very best to keep everybody informed about what is happening. I sent out letters a couple, three weeks ago to all the residents of Ziegler, giving them my contact information in case they have questions, and I've had some questions, so I'm passing those along to get them the correct information. But again, it is moving along. It'll be about a two-and-a-half-year project. So if Ziegler was part of your everyday commute, just keep that in mind that right now there are no traffic backups on the second phase, but as construction moves forward, there will be. But we are doing our best to keep everybody apprised of what's going on ahead of time so that there won't be any surprises. The other thing I just want to mention is the short-term rentals, better known as Airbnb issues that we've been talking about for some time. We have laid this over until after the Fourth of July, and we are setting up a task force. In fact, we had some people appointed today. So just as a reminder, the council also has to appoint someone from the industry, the Airbnb industry. That is something that the council will appoint. The mayor has an appointment from small business, and then Visit Mobile also has an appointment they need to make. And as we go forward, you know, we had these proposals, but as we learned, these proposals could not be approved to amend our current zoning ordinance because we are in the middle now of overhauling our entire zoning ordinance with the UDC. So once this task force meets and they come back with some sort of recommendation on how they would like us to handle short-term rentals, then we would have to go back then and put together some sort of an amendment to the what should be approved UDC at that time. So it's still a process, but this task force has its work cut out for them, and I think they will do a great job. We just need to get all of our folks appointed.
Thank you, Ms. Gregory, and thank you for all of your hard work on this particular issue. Mr. Williams?
It's another great day in Mobile, Alabama. I'm gonna tag on to Ms. Gregory for just a minute and say that, you know, this appears to be just an us against Airbnb, and it really isn't. It was brought to my attention as late as this weekend that I have a new one in District Four in the middle of an old established neighborhood with mostly elderly residents, and it's turned into a party house for locals. It's a place the kids can rent a house for, I say kids, young people can rent a house for a weekend at 125 bucks and just go in and be disruptive. And before we're able to report them and get adequate response, they're out. So there needs to be an understanding of those that take on these responsibilities of running a business that, the business license comes with a certain amount of expected enforcement on the owner's part. So I look forward to this process getting to some type of action, and I know some others do too. And I'm gonna then go to, to, to the other two that we are addressing, and that is start with food trucks. We had our first meeting, and it ended with, how about you guys get together, the restaurants and the food trucks, get together, y'all work out something, and let's, let's find out what we can do rather than ever, the trucks being told what they can't do. Let's, let's get something that shows that we're working together. Everybody agreed and nobody did anything of any substance. And I'll always say that if you want it bad, just ask the government to do it for you without input from those that it affects. So we've got a few more weeks here. To do something that shuts out one side or the other is certainly not acceptable, and I hope that we hear from the folks, because otherwise, I'm, I'm not gonna dream it up on my own and be arbitrary in this enforcement. And lastly, very important that we're gonna be talking about here in just a minute, while still Mr. Richardson's thunder, but there is one paragraph in this ordinance of tethering dogs that by the look of emails that I'm receiving, they're cut and paste from advocate websites and Facebook and others. They, the folks sending us notes know very, very, very little about what's written in them, if anything at all. And if you have a dog and you believe that things ought to be different, or you have a neighbor's dog who you care about, I, I ask that you get involved and so that we do what is effective for, for everyone. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. On February the 2nd at 2:00 PM, Mr. Jamie Roberts, Roberts of the Neighborhood Development and myself will have a meeting with the residents of Maysville. Letters will be going out this week regarding of the rezoning of the Mayge property on Hurtel Street, and the meeting will be held at the Mupped Up Purpose Room here at the Governor Plaza. And if the residents are not able to attend, there will be a Zoom link that will be provided. Again, all that information will be sent out this week to the neighbors that butt, butt to the property of the Hurtel Street property of 300 feet. And again, that meeting will be held on February the 2nd at 2:00 PM. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we would immediately, we're gonna take a break about, for about 15 minutes after this meeting is over, and then we're gonna go into the anti, the Public Safety Committee meeting to take up the anti-tethering ordinance. Let me say that I was sent a voluminous file pertaining to tethering animal dogs from people who wanted us to add, put that into an ordinance form. I sent, I sent all of that information to Chris. And Chris made this ordinance as simple as he could make it. He made it where anybody can look at the ordinance and say, I can't change my dog. It's, 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 it's not even a whole page. I come being Chris for making it simple. Ray Charles, before he passed, could see and understand. It's real simple. So I expect, I expect to have those professional organizations to come. Today, we invite them to come, and citizens who had an interest in this subject are invited to come. We're gonna, we're gonna hear from all of them, and then on the, on the date said, we're gonna vote on the matter, vote it up or down. That's, that's what we're planning to do. But we're gonna start our 15 minutes after we close this one out. We, we are going to start. There will be a candlelight service, a candlelight memorial over Tristendine Park at 4:30 today. I'm inviting all of you all to come. The mayor has already stated he is going to be there. We're gonna memorialize more than 500 citizens in this city who we have lost to the coronavirus. And we, we're gonna, we've already ordered, we already have them in hand, over 500 white bags. We have invited, ordered the, the baretta cam, the baretta candles to go inside of the bags. And at 4:30, we intend to have the lights on, and the bag's gonna be around the, the lake, around the lake that's in the park. There's a walking trail around that lake and around the circumference of that lake. On that walking trail, we're gonna have the bags all the way around there. And we're gonna write, we'll ask our citizens to phone us and give us the name of their loved ones, and we're gonna write their names on the bags. And there's still time. 2087441, there's still time. If you have a loved one out there and you want their name to appear on the bag, you have time. You, you can call now, 2087441, area code 251. And we'll be happy to add that name on the bag. So I'm looking forward to having a great ceremony over there for that. I believe Chandler Smith is going to come, and she's gonna plant some trees in honor of the first person who passed from COVID. They're gonna plant some trees in that person's honor. That's gonna be great. Dr. Asher told me he, he's hoping to come. So it's not gonna be anything long. We just, we're just gonna come and pay homage to those people who lost their lives to this virus. And I want to close out to send a little something about, about Dr. Monica King. His funeral, I mean, his, we celebrated his birthday yesterday. I want to say that I attended the funeral for Dr. King. And I marched from the church behind a wagon carrying the casket of Dr. King. I marched behind that wagon. I'm from Ebenezer to Morehouse College. And I stood there. I think Dr. Benjamin Mays eulogized Dr. King among hundreds of thousands of people. I, except for the inauguration of President Obama, I, it was the first time I had seen in my lifetime that many people in, in one place. I'd never seen anything like that. I want you to, I want you to know how much progress we have made from 1968. I could not leave the city before. I went downtown and I had to get permission slip to leave the city and to return. I did that. I would imagine a lot of folk would have wanted to go, but it was a curfew on this city. And it didn't, it didn't matter with me. I was gonna go through all hurdles to be there, because I felt that that was mighty man. Dr. King left these words with us that peace is not merely the absence of war intention. Peace is the presence of justice. That right may often yield to might, but right will win. That truth, though crushed to the earth, will rise again. And I want to close by saying that the tension we are experiencing in this earth, in this nation, is caused by the same issue that caused the Civil War. The refusal of America to accept all of its citizens as equal, entitled to all rights and privileges. And this is the only nation in the world that divides its citizens up into race. No other nation in the world, they all dropped this foolishness, but America. Until America come to grips with this foolish idea that there are some citizens in one race and other citizens in another race, we will continue to have friction across this nation. That's what led Dr. King into the fight until we come to, the City of Mobile did a great, great job with that. We pass on and say, that's it for race. America has not come to that. Until we do, we will still have this tension. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to come back to the proposed food truck ordinance for a minute. As I said earlier in this meeting, the Finance Committee will meet on February 2nd, immediately following the council meeting in order to take a public comment on the proposed ordinance that is currently before us. The major sticking point appears to be the setback requirements. Let, let me say that, let me, I'm gonna speak for a minute for myself and not for the committee or for the council. There, there are, as, as, as on many occasions, there are competing interests at play here. I understand that by allowing food trucks to use public rights away in, in city parks, that the city has a interest in how those food trucks are operated in terms of public health and safety and otherwise. But I, and we have, I'm, I'm very disappointed that, that the opportunity that existed for the brick and mortar operators and the food truck operators to get together and discuss this issue and arrive at something they could both agree to was ignored. Again, just speaking for myself, I'd like to say that while I understand the call for a setback, and I might be amenable to some type of modest setback, it is not, this country was built on free enterprise. And what free enterprise means is that you get businesses competing with each other, and you end up having the most convenient, cheapest product available to the consumer. It's not the business of government to protect businesses from competition. It's the business of government to encourage competition and free trade. Now, I'm not going to be in favor of any setback that effectively makes it impossible for food trucks to operate downtown. As I said, I'm, I'm open to some type of modest setback, but, and I'm gonna be interested in seeing these, these materials we get from Mr. Anderson. But I, as I said, I'm not gonna be in favor of any kind of setback that effectively eliminates food trucks from downtown. So there's still an opportunity for the food truck operators and the brick and mortar operators to get together and come up with something they can both live with. And I urge them to do that. In the meantime, the committee will meet on February 2nd, and we will take the matter up again in the City Council on February 17th. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you and your committee members for all the time and energy that you all have put into the food truck ordinance. I initially sponsored this ordinance, and I did so in response to some complaints from our brick and mortar downtown restaurants. And I totally buy into and believe in the concept of free enterprise. But, but I also believe we ought to be fair in executing that concept. That the energy and synergy that exists downtown that would incentivize a food truck to want to come there was created by the brick and mortar restaurants. They took a gamble, they took a bet on downtown Mobile and in many other places across our city long before a food truck phenomenon even existed. And had they not been successful, and had not businesses followed them, and had a crowd not be built up downtown to eat in those restaurants, those food trucks, many of whom don't even live in the City of Mobile or in Mobile County, would not be traveling downtown in order to compete with the brick and mortar restaurants. So I'm, I'm all for finding that happy medium. But when I consider the hundreds of thousands of dollars that some of these individuals have invested in us and in our downtown, I think it's incumbent upon us to do something to provide some relief. What really got me interested in this subject matter was I was out for lunch one day. I'm not gonna call the restaurant name. The restaurateur knows who it is. This is an established business right there on Dolphin Street that sells a variety of items, and a food truck is parked right on the sidewalk next to this business, and the patrons of the food truck are utilizing his tables, his salt, his pepper, going to use his restroom facilities after they've purchased food from the food truck. And I, I don't know, I wouldn't want another church to put their tent outside my front door while I'm preaching at 11 o'clock. And Joe, you wouldn't want, as a banker, you wouldn't want another bank to open up a drive-through right in front of your bank. We, we've got to find a happy medium. And I believe we're working toward that. I'm encouraged by what Mr. Davis has said about wanting to hear from all sides, and, and that's a sincere plea from us, because we often hear that this is a done deal. Y'all are gonna do what you want to do. That's not the case. In, in 99% of the issues that we deal with, we want feedback so that we can do what's fair and what's just for everybody. And so thank you for the, the continued effort, and I look forward to the committee meeting and look forward to any further dialogue from citizens. uh, citizens in our community.
And this is not a committee meeting.
Right.
Well, I, I think, I, I'd like to, I'd like to respond that I'm not aware of any city
Wait, man.
That, that prohibits a church from opening up across the street from your church or a bank from opening up across the street from another bank. And, and as a matter of fact, we got corners in this city where you got four banks on. So there's no, what we're being asked to do here, and again, I'm not opposed to all setbacks. But the setbacks need to be reasonable. And they need to be done in such a way that you don't prohibit food trucks from downtown.
I think we're now on the same page, Mr. Davis. Uh, and, and we'll work toward that committee meeting. I look forward to further discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, do I, do I hear motion?
Uh, Mr. President, I wanna say that we're gonna convene. Now, this is not about food trucks now.
Yeah, I'm listening, Mr. Richardson, I'm sorry.
We're gonna convene the Public Safety Committee meeting in fifteen minutes, which will be twenty minutes to twelve.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Good.
We're probably moved to second in the discussion. If not, all